And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And would you please stay standing for the invocation to be led by Bob Mesher?
First, let us pause a moment to remember those whom we will miss, especially Mike Hall and Craig Hunt Jr. This evening, let us give thanks today for the gentle and abundant rain we have received this season, the reduced water restrictions, the green hillsides, and the blooming flowers on this beautiful island. Let us pray today for the leaders in our city, that they may work together to resolve the issues before them and to make good decisions that will benefit our community and foster goodwill. Amen.
And Denise, may we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Temmelson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. And we have Doug Federall, soon-to-be-retired Captain Doug Federall, in the audience today, and he's going to come up and say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor Marshall, councilmembers, staff. My name is Doug Federall. I am the retiring captain of Avalon Station. After 33 years on the Sheriff's Department, it's time for me to retire, and I wanted to publicly and formally announce it to all of you tonight, even though I'm sure most of you have already heard this news. My 33 years have been fantastic. Like others have said, I've had a front-row seat to the greatest show on earth for those 33 years. Probably the highlight of my career was five years ago, when a prior city council accepted me over here as the station commander. It gave me an opportunity to lead Avalon Sheriff's Station, and it's been a fantastic, fantastic ride. When I first arrived here, I told the council that my goal was to maximize public safety through developing a strong community policing program, and I think we've reached our goals. In the time that I've been here, I've learned a lot. I've learned that it's not just the views, the scenery, the ocean, Crescent Avenue, the interior, that make Avalon the beautiful place that it is, but it's the people, and that's what I tell all the visitors that I talk to, that when you're here, don't just take in the sights and sounds, but talk to the locals, whether they were born here or moved here. You'll never meet a nicer group of people. And I truly feel blessed to have been given this opportunity and to meet and work with everybody here in Avalon. I'm not going to name any names specifically, because there's someone I'm sure to leave out, and there's so many people that have treated us so well. And it's more than just a community. I mean, I've learned that everyone here is a family, and that Avalon family welcomed myself, my wife, and my daughter with open arms, and couldn't have treated us better in the time that we were here. I came here prepared tonight to introduce the next captain. He came down with a situation last night where he had to be admitted to the hospital, and he was doing really good to still make it here today, but was unable to. His name is John Hawking. He's going to be promoted to the rank of captain in the next two weeks, as soon as I get out of his way. And I've known John for 15 years, and we worked together Carson years ago. He's a great guy. He's going to do a fantastic job. The city, the Sheriff's Department, agreed for him to be the next captain, and I strongly support it. So with that, I just want to say thank you to all of you. It has truly been an honor and a privilege to serve as your station captain, and thank you very much.
All right, Doug, thank you. And be sure to bring your wife back when we get the new restaurant out on the casino dock area, because we can listen to music again. Have a cocktail. Hi.
Hi, Michael Ponce. Being on the council that brought Doug to the island, I just wanted to say how sorry I am to see him go. I totally understand that it's time to spend time with his family, and not just the island family, but the family on the mainland. But it was an honor and a privilege to have served with him. He is an amazing man. So I just wanted to thank him for his service to our community. He did an outstanding job.
Thank you. That's very nice, Michael. Okay, now we have a presentation. It's Southern California Edison.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. My name is Jeff Lawrence with Southern California Edison. I am here to give you an update on Stage 3, but more importantly, also on our Stage 1 activation. So Scott, thank you for the clarification on the edit there. The next month, we'll present Stage 1 on our PowerPoint. But we do have some water conservation numbers for the final month of Stage 3 that we'd like to update you on, as well as a preview of our desalination expansion study that will be, our consultant will be presenting to you sometime in April. So we continue to see modest increases in the reservoir level on a weekly basis since the significant rain event we had in February. As of last Thursday, the reservoir level is at 556 acre-feet. That's approximately 52 percent of the reservoir's overall capacity. For this winter season, we've seen an increase of 435 acre-feet dating back to our historic low of 121 acre-feet on November 17. So fortunately, we received some significant rain and able to discontinue the mandatory rationing that's been in effect for the last two and a half years. In terms of our Stage 3 water reduction efforts, we continue to see favorable results in reducing water use compared to our baseline year. In February, reduced water use by 43 percent, and that while visitor counts went up a staggering 144 percent in the month of February. So we went up from about 36,000 visitors to almost 90,000 visitors in the month of February. And this was a reduction of about 8 acre-feet compared to the month of February in our base In terms of our water reduction, since we've activated Stage 3 water rationing in early September, we reduced water use by about 49 percent, and we were targeting a 50 percent reduction in Stage 3. So we've essentially hit our goal for Stage 3 water rationing, this while visitor counts have gone up 62 percent since early September. This equates to a reduction in about 64 acre-feet compared to our baseline period. And if you look at the entire two-and-a-half-year period that we've been in either Stage 2 or Stage 3, water rationing has saved about 400 acre-feet of water. So that's a significant amount of water. It would equate to about a 16-month supply from water use during the year of 2014. And as everyone knows, the reservoir reached a water level of 120 acre-feet in November. So you can imagine the significance of saving 400 acre-feet of our groundwater supplies. So again, we want to applaud the community for their efforts over the last two and a half years. On this slide, we continue to monitor the performance of various customer classes in terms of water reductions, essentially comparing our residential customers and our commercial customers, and we continue to see consistent results of, as we've seen for the last couple of years, they're essentially reducing water use at about the same rate. Over the last 12 months, residential customers have reduced their water use by 47 percent, while commercial customers have reduced their water use by 41 percent. And this subsequent slide is just a monthly breakdown of residential versus commercial water use. And you'll see in the month of February, residential water sales island-wide was 5.6 acre-feet, and commercial use about the same, 5.4 acre-feet.
Just to confirm, residential also includes vacation rentals, correct? Not all of them are commercial?
Yeah, I would say most of them fall under a residential rate.
Okay, thank you.
This slide here is showing you our compliance for Stage 2, a portion of Stage 2, and then since Stage 3 was activated in early September. The blue line represents customers that received a flow restrictor violation, so essentially their second violation. The red line represents customers that received two or more violations, and then the orange line is an overall percentage of customers that received a violation during the billing period. So you can see last month, we reported to you a significant spike in our exceedance over the monthly water allotments. This month, we dropped back down to what we had seen normal levels at, right around 6 to 8 percent. So in February, we had 94 percent of our customers compliant with their Stage 3 water allotment, which is a phenomenal record. So as we discussed, two weeks ago, on March 7th, we submitted a compliance filing with the California Public Utilities Commission to deactivate Stage 3 mandatory water rationing, and we activated Stage 1 mandatory conservation at that time. So essentially, water allotments are no longer in effect, so customers no longer have to measure their water use compared to a monthly allotment. However, we do still encourage our customers to conserve water, and we'll talk about what the restrictions and prohibitions are in Stage 1 momentarily. We'll soon be having operators removing flow restrictors that have been issued. Customers will also see a removal fee that's in our tariff of $200 added to their bill for anyone that had a flow restrictor issued during Stage 2 or Stage 3.
Just real quick, I don't know how quickly you can move everyone in town, but will they not see the bill until theirs is? So if you don't get to somebody's for two months, they won't get the bill for two months? Are you going to put the $200 on there immediately and maybe get around to them later? Do you know how that's going to go?
Our plan is to try to remove the flow restrictors as quickly as possible, and then add the removal fee once the restrictor's actually been removed.
And if, because this still is kind of a slow season for people, if they're having troubles, can they work out some kind of a payment plan if they're, you know, on that $200? Or can...
I'm not sure what our customer service policies are, but I'd be happy to reach out to them, find out if there would be some leniency.
Okay.
They're fairly understanding about it, because I've asked for extensions on my payments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Continue, I'm sorry.
Fairly.
Yeah, I just want to take a note here. I'll follow up on that. So this weekend, next week, we'll be running advertisements in the local newspapers announcing the deactivation of Stage 3 and the activation of Stage 1. And we have taken Stage 3 information materials down from our website, and we're in the process of updating those now. So in the near future, we'll have those updated and on the website, so please continue to check back for additional information. And then we'll also be sending out letters to all of our customers in early to mid-April, informing them of the change as well. So in terms of Stage 1 mandatory conservation, although we received significant rainfall in January and February, the reservoir still isn't at the capacity we'd like to see it at. It is still below that 600-acre-foot level where we would typically activate Stage 1 water conservation. So we're not quite in the clear of the drought yet, as is a good portion of Southern California. Most of Southern California is out of exceptional or extreme drought conditions, but still portions of the state remain in moderate drought conditions. The State Water Resources Control Board has extended the governor's May 2016 emergency regulation that maintains a number of the restrictions and prohibitions that are in our Stage 1 mandatory conservation. So for a full list of those restrictions and prohibitions, you can go to our website at sce.com and look up Schedule 14.1, and you'll see what those restrictions and prohibitions are. They're essentially the same restrictions and prohibitions that we've been enforcing in Stage 2 and Stage 3, with the exception in the watering times that are allowed. So customers are now allowed to water more frequently during Stage 1. So now that we're in daylight savings time, customers can water between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., and 5:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. any day of the week. And in Stage 3, it was one hour a day, one day per week. So we've been progressing through the drought and our drought mitigation plans. We've also been updating our Middle Ranch reservoir forecasts. And so we're taking an extremely conservative approach with our forecast to make decision on our water system and our rationing plan and conservation plan. So you see, this goes back to 2011, and you can see a steady decline in the reservoir level during the persistent drought conditions, our five going on six-year drought here in Southern California, and then a significant recharge this winter. And then from that dashed green vertical line there, this is our conservative forecast on not necessarily what we would expect to see, but what the reservoir could do if we don't have significant recharge in the future. So this doesn't assume any significant rainfall that would lead to an increase in the water level. I wouldn't call it a worst-case scenario, but it's certainly a very conservative model. While the reservoir is between 300 and 600 acre-feet, we take a base year of September 2013 through August 2014, and that's the period of time before we entered Stage 2 mandatory rationing. And that assumes sales numbers for that timeframe, as well as DSal production during that timeframe. And then when the reservoir level is below 300 acre-feet, we take a base year of December 2014 through November 2015. And this is a conservative base year when we were at 25 percent rationing at that time, and we build that into the forecast. Based on this tool, the forecast of the 300-acre-foot level, or what could potentially be a triggerfish Stage 2, would be April 2019. So a couple of years out from any potential Stage 2 rationing at this point in time. We continue to see this forecast improve, because I said that this forecast does not assume any significant rainfall, and over the last several weeks, we continue to see water recharge occurring in Middle Ranch, so our forecast continues to improve. So if we continue to see steady increases in the reservoir level over the next several weeks or months, this forecast will continue to improve.
And I'm sorry, you might have said that, that's with no DSal operating?
So in our conservative forecast, we assume DSal production during those two years that I told you about. That's in the table at the bottom.
Okay.
And so there is additional production from Plant Number 2 available as well that would potentially improve this forecast. But we want to take a more conservative approach. So you can see the various horizontal lines are what are historically triggers in our Stage 2 mandatory rationing plan, but as evidenced with our state's reactivation, we do have the ability to go below those triggers.
Jeff, the difference between reservoir drawdown and Middle Ranch well production is evaporation? At the bottom of the chart?
Middle Ranch reservoir production and... Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So there are environmental factors that influence that, yeah. And then you can see, under the annual totals, the acre-foot in DSal production that we assume in this forecast. So the top blue line is the reservoir's capacity, and then going from top to bottom are the Stage 1, Stage 2, and Stage 3 and Stage 4 triggers for the reservoir.
Jeff, could I ask a question? If the DSal went in operation, that supply doesn't go into the Middle Ranch reservoir, does it? So, and you correct me, and I know you will in your gentlemanly way, and I appreciate that. So to the extent that DSal is produced on its own, I'm not, it still doesn't, I'm not clear how that relates to the Middle Ranch reservoir, and you probably heard those questions before.
So the DSal production that is in excess of demand, that would be considered surplus, would go into the Baker tanks. But it would not be calculated into any increases in the reservoir, but what it would do is prevent reductions in the reservoir. So that's how we utilize the DSal production in this case. You would not see in our forecast where DSal production would exceed demand on a daily average basis. In terms of when we would hit the 200-acre-foot level, assuming, again, no significant rainfall, which is Stage 3, that would be in July 2020. So a much more favorable situation than what we're facing just a couple of months ago before the Pacific it rains events. One thing I want to stress, I'd like to jump back to on our Stage 1 activation, I think the question came up at the last council meeting about if we did go into further stages of rationing, what would the baseline year be? And if we continue to be in various stages of either conservation or rationing, we won't essentially reestablish a base year until we are out of rationing and conservation for a 12-month period, in which case, we would have to revert back to our current base year, which is June 2012 through May 2013. So if there's any perception in the community that we are now reestablishing the base year and we should use water, we just want to stress that that's incorrect. So we would continue to use the base year that we have until we're out of Stage 1 for a 12-month period. So conservation is the key here. In terms of the grant funding opportunities that we are monitoring and have applied for, there are no updates on the applications that we submitted thus far. We're still awaiting announcements on a number of them, and most of those, we hope to hear something in May of this year. And then we continue to work on a couple of grants as well, primarily the Prop 1 Desalination Grant, which we're hopeful that the guidelines will be released sometime this spring, but we don't have confirmation on that yet. Under grant opportunities that we're tracking, there's one new grant that we've added to the list, and it's on the bottom. It's the California Water Commission's Prop 1 Water Storage Investment Program. And there's going to be a workshop held on March 30th that we plan to attend to see if there are any opportunities for Catalina in this grant opportunity. It is a significant amount of money that's being available, $2.7 billion.
Why are you shaking your head?
Where's that at?
That funding, based upon what Joe Byrne has told me, is for water storage projects that benefit the San Joaquin Valley.
Okay. Yeah, there hasn't been a lot published, and so we weren't sure.
What was the thing that was supposed to be added to some, our name was supposed to be on some?
No, okay, so, no, what? So there's various stages of Prop 1, there's various buckets in Prop 1 for various grant opportunities. This particular one addresses improvements in storage for San Joaquin Delta, because the farmers, frankly, and the lobbyists pushed this one through first. There are other buckets out there, and in one of the buckets that is applicable to Avalon, we had the legislation specifically amended to include Catalina Island and Avalon in that bucket, so that we are there. But again, they haven't finished the guidelines for how it's to go. We do know from what we've been told that the guidelines will be similar to the previous Prop 1 funds that we've got, but the funding amount will be different. I think in the last go-round, the total funding was, I'm going to say, $8.9 million for that particular round, that, you know, includes areas like Avalon. This round, it's $30 million. So that therefore, the restrictions that were put on the last round of $3 million per grant, we believe, based upon our best information, those will be increased as well, because the pool of money out there is going up, I think, five times, or four or five times. And so again, we're still waiting for the guidelines to come out.
That's all in terms of grant funding. We did want to take some time to give you a preview of our Desalination Consultant's DSal Expansion Report. Our consultant sends his apologies for not being here in person to give the presentation. He was available to attend, however, he informed us last week that he needed more time to actually finish the report. And what we had talked about previously was giving all of you in advance, copy of the report, to be able to preview it in advance of the presentation. And so we reached out to David and some of you to find out what the best approach was, and so we're going to go ahead and just give you a preview, and then within the next two to three weeks, give you a final copy of the report. And then sometime in April, we'll have Val Frankel come and present his findings to you and be able to answer all of the questions you may have on that report. It has turned out to be a significant report. It's, I think, in the last draft we've seen, it's over 200 pages, and it's a much more extensive report than what you typically see in a feasibility study. And we've structured it based on materials that were provided in previous rounds of desalination grant funding. And so we want to make sure that the study included all the points that were in an application of a successful grant. So we wanted to make sure that it was a report that would be attached to our application and hopefully be a strong candidate for desalination grants in the future.
Sure.
So it is an extensive report. We do take accountability for the delays and apologize for that, but we are getting close to seeing the final report from our consultant, and we'll be happy to turn it over to you when it's complete.
Right. And before you get started on this, Jeff, because you aren't Mr. Frankel, but I appreciate you giving us this, if anyone in the audience has questions, I'm not, I don't think, believe we're expecting Jeff to answer those questions. We'll be taking those down, and they will be providing them to Edison, so then they can get the answers, and that can be presented to us when Mr. Frankel attends the meeting.
Absolutely.
Does that seem good?
Yeah, that seems like a good approach to me.
Okay.
I'd actually like to turn this over to Kim Brown. So Kim Brown is project manager for Southern California Edison. In addition to taking the lead on this study with Val Frankel, she's also our project manager for the various grant funding applications that we're submitting and tracking. I do want to caution you that we are considering these conclusions and recommendations preliminary, because we've seen final drafts of the report, but we haven't seen the final report after it's gone through editing and formatting from Greeley and Hanson. So at that point in time, when we have that report, we'll be able to consider this final findings.
Great, thank you.
With that, Kim?
Okay. Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Thanks for having me. Basically, what I'm going to do tonight is provide you with a preliminary preview of feasibility study findings, which will be incorporated into the water master plant.
Can I get your name again, please?
Kim Brown.
Okay, thank you.
As you know, SC has contracted with Val Frankel of Greeley and Hanson Engineering Consulting Firm to conduct this feasibility study for us. Greeley and Hanson has over 100 years of experience in water management, specifically in water, wastewater, desalination, water, and water refuse. Val himself has personally managed over 300 projects and authored over 100 publications, some of which are recognized and used by AWWA. In fact, I believe he's written part of the standards for desalination for AWWA. And he's also received numerous accolades and awards, and he will be here next month to present the complete feasibility study PowerPoint presentation, as Jeff has mentioned. So what were the objectives of the feasibility study? First of all, it's a document that will be used for drought resiliency planning for Catalina for the long run. The document itself has analyzed water demand for the last 10 years in Catalina and has forecasted water out until 2035. A component, it will be also used as a component of the grant application, as Jeff has just A component, it will be also used as a component of the grant application, as Jeff has just mentioned, through the Department of Water Resources. And he also mentioned that the draft guidelines have not been published, but we are expecting them this spring. So what we wanted to do was analyze the alternatives to meet the project objective of the grant, and that is to find upgraded or additional and reliable long-term source of supply through desalination, to look at desalinated water supply, production, and storage, and to proceed to the design and construction of a desalination project if we're awarded the grant. Some of the components of the study were to evaluate, as I said previously, our current and future demand, and that is using Title 22 to look at max day demand and peak hour demand for our system now and in the future. We needed this baseline from which to build a long-term resilient source of desalinated supply. And then to also look at alternatives to meet future storage and to minimize future drought impacts. Another thing just to consider, and Val is going to go into all of this in a lot more detail, I'm just giving you some real preliminary, I think the PowerPoint's about 30 slides. So you're going to get a much better understanding of the whole process. But one of the basic things to understand with desalination is that it's a balance of variables, and the variables are production, the RO, storage, and the supply wells. And so in analyzing the best alternative for Catalina, we had to take into account those three variables. For instance, if you have a large production capacity, you don't need as much storage. In order to get a large production capacity, you need a lot more source water wells. If you have a large amount of storage, you need a lower production capacity. So those are some of the variables to keep in mind as we move forward with looking at the results. So with that, is it the top one? So here's a very, here's a preliminary draft comparative cost estimate of the three alternatives that were the result of the study. Alternative number one incorporates the construction of two to three new source water wells, depending on how much water they produce. And it also incorporates additional storage, and it incorporates upgraded RO, which means for Catalina, replacing one of the existing RO units from Plant 1 with a larger RO unit. Alternative two looks at constructing eight seawater wells and replacing two RO units and additional storage, 1.03 million gallons. And then alternative three is more wells, 13 wells, replacing three RO units. And so you can see here from what I just spoke about, if you replace three RO units that are now 35 gallon a minute capacity with 200 gallon capacity, 200 minute gallon capacity, you don't need as much storage. So there's half a million gallons of storage there, because now you're producing more water a minute, so you don't need to store as much water a minute to meet our Title 22 requirements. And this will all become clearer as we go through this in the weeks coming up. Next slide. So how will we carry out and implement the alternative that is the most cost beneficial for Catalina, which was the alternative one? How will we implement that? It will be a phased implementation. Sorry? You want to go back? Oh, Jeff wants me to review the total capital cost. So the total capital cost for alternative one, $19,941,000. Total capital cost for alternative two, $24,160,000. And for alternative three, $32,359,000.
So if you land on Prop 1, you're looking at balance of storage, treatment, and production, and then looking at these three options, the cheapest, the second on the box is alternative
It also makes the most sense for Catalina due to the difficulty with drilling source water wells. Okay.
In alternative one, the two existing wells would be replaced, or would they be in addition to, is that?
In addition to.
Okay.
Does that include the rehabilitation of the existing wells?
Does it include well rehabilitation? This cost, no. But well rehabilitation for well one and two are just in our normal O and M budget. As they need rehabilitated, they are.
To put this in perspective, as a resident of Avalon, with alternative one, what does that mean to a ratepayer? What does $8.36 mean? Or any of that to a ratepayer?
There's really too many variables to be able to tell you how would it affect our customers' bills. Those decisions would be made in a rate case, and it depends on how many years are you going to recover those costs. It could be a five-year term, it could be a 10-year term. There's grant funding opportunities that are out there that will hopefully knock down some of the expenses to our customers. There's just a number of variables that we would have to bring in someone from our regulatory group after they built some extensive models and could tell you what those impacts could be potentially.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next slide. Okay, so how will we implement this alternative? It will be in a phased approach. So basically, phase zero has already been implemented, and that's the installation of Plant 2. So the next phase is a half a million gallons of storage, and that, we've applied for a grant for money to do that, as you folks, I think, know already. And phase two will be the construction of two to three new wells and 1.33 million gallons of storage. Doesn't make any sense to build additional storage now when we won't have the water from the wells that don't exist yet to fill it. And then stage three will be the construction or the replacement of one of the RO units, the old RO units in Plant 1 with a new RO unit, which will be, instead of 35 gallons a minute, 200 gallons a minute. And with that, we've also got money in the budget to re-clad the existing building. You have to remember, those RO units are over 20 years old, and they're at the end of their life expectancy, or getting close to it. So in our planning, we do look at replacing those. So that's basically, you know, how we plan to implement it. It will depend, this phased approach could turn into more phases. This is very preliminary. This is kind of how we've laid it out to have a preliminary look at it. It will depend on funding, on stakeholder, you know, cooperation and support, political will. So there are a lot of variables, but this is a good beginning for future planning for Catalina and drought resiliency and master planning for the water utility. I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mayor, could I just ask?
Yeah, you're not going to get away that easy. I'm sorry, Kim. I'm sure somebody's got questions.
Question?
Cool.
So the premise that I understood you at the beginning was that the fewer wells you have, the more storage that you would need. It's a balance, I think you described, or Jeff described it as a balance. So if you had 10 wells, you would need less storage because the ability to produce water, desalate water on a continuous basis would be higher. So in phase...
Let me just add in there, if you had 10 wells, you'd also need more RO.
Yes, yes, yes. So if you have two existing wells that, I was unclear if they were going to be rehabbed in phase one, would it not, you know, would it not be then with two wells, more, wouldn't it be not more necessary? Wouldn't it be more likely that you would need more storage to produce a D cell on a non-peak, at non-peak? Or why, does that make sense? Because with...
We're limited, the answer to your question is, we're limited by our source water.
And so that, the only thing, because you're the experts, and you'll tell us, and you're limited, so in phase one, you would be rehabbing the existing wells, or no?
So what are you thinking of when you're saying rehabbing?
Making them better, fixing them up, making them so that capacity is, that they're able to produce maybe more at their graded, you know, what their capacity is, pumping more water.
Right.
I think he's referring to the report that the city commissioned by the Corolla Group, which looked at those wells and found that they were in need of rehabilitation because the capacity of the wells was compromised by the age and the buildup of rock and sediment and stuff like that. So one of the recommendations that the city came up with was a quick fix for expanding capacity, was to rehab the existing wells.
Okay, all right. The wells have been rehabbed once, and the wells are constrained by their construction, I think is the larger picture. As they need to be rehabbed, they are. But the bigger constraint is just, is their construction, which really can't be fixed.
But you may just fix them along the line of basically, the answer is to get new wells.
Right. Any well is rehabilitated every so often to clean it out, clean the sediment out at the bottom, make sure that the casing's in good shape, et cetera, and the louvers are open. But as far as how it's, how the wells are truly constricted, it's by, it's due to their construction. So we would be more, it would be a more cost-effective alternative or benefit to focus on constructing new additional wells.
Sure. I'm sorry if they distracted you while they were over there talking.
Sorry.
Those wells are in a pretty precarious place. Will the new ones be in a similar area, down by the quarry, rock quarry down that way? Can you tell me anything about that?
That's one of the locations that we're evaluating. It makes sense operationally to keep them in a similar location. It is, it's a difficult problem, the location of the wells here, due to just the geology of the island.
Yeah, the rock.
But we are looking at that location.
Yeah. Great. Can I ask you a question about storage, please? How long can water that's being stored stay in the storage containers before it has to be rotated out? I mean, is that, that's something that just constantly moves through, right? Or does it, is it actually conditioned?
These are the questions that we'll take down, and then we'll have Val Frankel be able to answer those questions when he's here to give the presentation. And if you have any other questions in the meantime, please email me or email Adeline. We'll make sure and provide the consultant those questions, so he's prepared to answer them for you.
Well, let's make sure that we get, can you please repeat your question and say it in its entirety, so we get that on the record, so we can make sure that they answer it?
Absolutely, except I don't want to be stricken to just the questions that we asked now to get them answered then, because I want to be able, be able to have a discussion and brainstorm that night, because we're going to, this might get pretty contentious here. People want to know answers now. We want to know times, we want to know just positions, things on the island, how the residents are going to be treated versus the stakeholders that have more money than the general public.
Well, let me just clarify, Val Frankel's not coming to speak about a lot of the stuff you just mentioned. He's coming to give you a presentation on his report and can answer your technical questions. And we're not going to limit him to just questions you provide in advance. He'll be able to answer any technical questions on the report that evening.
We don't, this is the report? There's nothing about the wells in this report. There's nothing about underground water storage. There's nothing about, we don't have any in-depth information.
And so what the, this is a preview, and what they've promised us is that once his 200-page report is done, they're going to give it to us in advance of the council.
How much in advance? I'm a slow reader, and I want to, you know, go through it meticulously.
Well, the date of the presentation is yet to be scheduled. So I can't commit to how many days in advance you have it, but the purpose would be to give you, you know, a week or so advance notice to be able to repeat, to preview the report. And if you want to have a certain amount of time, let us know, and we'll just add that amount of time to when the report is finalized and provided to you, and we'll schedule accordingly.
Yeah.
We want to, we want to provide what the council and staff want in terms of the amount of time you need to read this report.
Only two weeks, I mean, at least, to go through this information. But I don't want to hold up, I don't want it to hold up the whole process, because the more expedient that we do this, the better, then we can get on with the program, and we can figure out what we can do, short-term, long-term, and get with the program and get off this rationing thing, and get people understanding that we're starting to come to some conclusions about all these things that we've been fighting for for the last three years, four years. So it's really important.
I imagine there's going to be a lot of scientific data in there.
Yeah. And I imagine...
And just so the council knows, we've already agreed with Edison that when we get that report, we're shipping it off to our engineers, so that our engineers can look at it and look at the technical, and they can give us feedback, so that when we have that meeting, we'll have our experts have gone through it and have some questions for us.
Okay, now, we'd be taking comments from, excuse me, Cindy, would we be taking comments from the general public that night, or should the council people are going to be representing the general public that they, you know, stand next to? Can you tell me that? Will Mr. Frankel be taking questions from the public in the audience?
Val Frankel will be happy to take questions from council, staff, and the audience that pertain to the content of his report.
Okay.
And I think we're asking the same thing here, but I just want to make sure that the council gets the report at the same time that the city gets the report, and that way we have an opportunity to read through it while the city's still doing its, shipping it off to other people. But I think we want to have a time to absorb it as well.
In my view, you are the city, so we will make sure that you get it, and whenever we get it, you get it, and that then you have enough time, whatever time you need, to review that report, and so that you feel comfortable with it, what's contained in.
But in parallel to Corolla.
No, that's exactly what we intend to do.
Was that posted on the website, too?
We can certainly make a link to the website.
I mean, that's a couple hundred pages, though, right?
Well, you know, yeah, we'll shrink it.
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea, because I know there's people that are going to want to see it.
Yes.
In Spanish, too. No, I'm joking.
We'll work on that.
Well, you know, we've mentioned that before, that we need to start producing things on our website in Spanish.
I will be, I will be commenting in my report on that, yes. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Mayor Potemps, your hand up there.
No, my finger just...
Oh, okay. Anybody from the audience have any questions? Leslie, come on in.
Oh, I guess. We'll come back to that.
Thank you for the preliminary report. I was just listening to your forecast of water demand to 2035. Does the report indicate how you come to those figures of how many people you're serving, how many visitors you're anticipating 15 years from now, and how you came to those numbers? Just curious.
Yeah, so we've met with various stakeholders and developers on the island to project out what their development plans are, but that information won't be shared at that level. A lot of that information is considered internal only, so we'll be able to share with you what the amount of, in terms of water demand, from what we've collected in our 20-year forecast, that would be. But it's not going to be at a specific level in terms of site development, customers, that type of thing. We will have a volume of water demand in our forecast.
What stakeholders you're talking about?
We met with several stakeholders.
Island company?
Yeah.
Who else?
Our stakeholders have asked us not to share this information.
City of Avalon? Okay, so is there something going on here that we should know about that we don't? I mean, because everything's got to be approved by the city council.
We're dealing with third parties here. You're asking for us to make a report public. We don't necessarily have approval from all third parties to share.
I'd like to know how big the community is going to be growing, that you're projecting the community to grow in that amount of time. Because we have to make our plans, too, here, the five of us with with in concert with what what the utilities are doing as well. I mean, if you guys know something we don't know, I would hope you'd share it with us so that we can understand exactly where the community is going to be growing in the future or, you know, what you guys plan on doing. I mean, I know you're working very comfortably and cozy with the island company about this whole water thing and I don't want that to get a little bit out of hand because.
Well, I would say there's multiple stakeholders that we've met with, but it is not Edison's place to pass along third-party information. There are probably other channels that the city has to obtain that information. However, it's it's not our place to provide it.
I'm wondering. Go ahead, Cindy.
I'm sorry. So along the lines of Leslie's question and similar to what Joe is saying, how do we I want to know the the projection or how you're saying that because if we, let's say, we as a community, we have 1.1 million visitors a year right now and by the end of 2019, we want to see 1.4 million visitors a year coming to the island. So if we're planning that additional amount right now, we don't have if if we look at the rainfall and and all of that, we don't have the water to be able to support that kind of growth. So that that number is so critical because when we're projecting what we're going to do in the future, the Chambers projections, individual business projections, when we say we want to go from, you know, 75% capacity in our hotels to 92%, and how are we going to what money are we going to put into growing our businesses, that kind of thing? We need to know that that you're able to accommodate that amount of growth. I hope that made sense.
Yeah, I understand what you're you're driving at. So that there will be in our demand forecast, the development plans that we were made aware of and then escalations in terms of visitor counts over the next 20 years. And it's based on what we've seen over the last 10 years historically. So there are some some peak years in the last 10 years where visitor counts were extremely high, water usage was very high. And so we're going to use the historical information that we have along with our what we know to be development plans over the next 20 years to size our our water system. And let me stress, now's probably a good opportunity. These alternatives are not a single project and that's why we laid them out here as Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. This this could be a 20- or 30-year build-out that we would piecemeal. So you would you'd likely see, you know, storage capacity installed in Phase One and then more storage capacity installed in a later stage. The the grant funding opportunities we have will largely dictate what that Phase One looks like. So when we know what the guidelines are for grant grant funding, we will model a scope of work based on what is eligible for grant funding. And so that this is subject to change. It's essentially a hypothetical, but we will try to maximize the dollars that are available in the in the Prop One grants.
So but if there is no grants available, let's say, whoops, does that mean it stops? Or we just say, okay, ratepayers, you're going to have to pay for this? Is that kind of would if we if we were saying, you know, we don't want to be in this situation and we still want to grow, then it's like, what is the community willing to to pay for?
Yeah, so at that point in time, if there were no grant funds available, it would be Southern California Edison, meeting with local stakeholders and coming up with a strategy and and coming up with a plan on how we could finance this and and manage the financial impacts to our our small rate base here in Catalina.
So maybe, you know, I'm sorry, but I'm going to take this all the way back down to third grade here for a minute and you might have to come back at the next meeting and answer this in a, I mean, I may not be able to tonight, but I just don't understand if today, we're talking at least a couple of years before, two years maybe, before we even start on number Phase One of alternate number one, before it's installed or we have more capacity. So today, if we don't get any more rainfall, we're going to be back in Stage Two in summertime?
No.
There's no way.
Are the forecasts that we currently have, which is a conservative forecast, is April 2019, when we would hit that 300-acre-foot trigger for Stage Two?
So what if Edison, now that we're in Phase One, what if you give allocations for everybody who's on a list waiting for an allocation? That's all factored into?
Well, you need to remember those those will go through us.
Yeah, we still have the.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, is that is that still factored in here?
So pending allocations are not approved during Stage One. So we'd have to come out of Stage One before any pending allocations are reviewed and approved or denied.
So for example, the list of allocation sets out there right now, nothing can still happen with those allocations until.
Correct.
Until actually the state is out of Phase One, too, because it's the the state's above what we determine locally, too, isn't it?
Well, if if we've submitted a filing to the California Public Utility Mission to deactivate Stage One, we could begin approving allocation requests at that point in time.
But the State Water State Water Resource Board rules are less stringent than Edison's.
Okay, okay, so that's helpful. Sorry. No, I think what my what I'm worried about is we're we're not we're not out of the woods yet by any means and I'm worried about what we're as a community, what we're trying to grow towards. I mean, what's what? How many visitors a year can we handle? How many more residents can we handle? How many more units can we really handle? I think that's sort of an elephant in the room that none of us on any side can really answer.
If I may, typically, my understanding is that the general plan of the city, which was adopted in 2013, sets of parameters for growth, subject to limitations described in the general plan. So to the extent that there's information available by stakeholders, to go back to questions that council members had asked, to the extent that there's information about growth proposals, it it's really important for the city to know those so that so that its other infrastructure can can be can be developed in accordance with with those needs, too. And just a note, no matter what the stakeholders have in mind, if it's inconsistent with the general plan, it won't be approved by as a matter of law, as a matter of state law. So it has to conform with the adopted general plan. And of course, in our case, it's a local coastal plan, which is the corollary. So it's really, really, really important. Did I say really? Yeah. It was really important to know for for all of us to have to share the same, I'm not saying you're at liberty, but all of us to have the same information so that when we talk about saltwater systems and we talk about sewage treatment capacity, when we talk about a fire protection systems and and fire apparatus and all those things, and that's really what that general plan, that's going to guide, we think, what you do or don't do or what stakeholders do or don't do. It's what has already been adopted in the general plan.
Yeah, I don't know how frequently that's reviewed and updated, but I'd be surprised if there were major inconsistencies between the information you have and what's in your master plan where we're we're talking about fairly modest increases in demand from development.
And and we have the, based on what you're saying, we could easily go to talk to every stakeholder that we know and try to come up with those same numbers. I mean, it's probably there's not 1,000 stakeholders, you know, so I think we could if we really needed that number for us for all those other things, we could we could ask.
Well, we'll have the report and so we can also reverse engineer the report. So once we get the report, we can know what the demand are.
Exactly.
And we have some idea what developments are coming and for those that we don't, we'll try and figure out based upon looking at the actual numbers once we finally get the report.
Each individual is a stakeholder.
Right.
Thank you.
And we need to understand that each individual is going to be important and represented by the five of us and quality of life is a big issue there. So, you know, we want to understand all this stuff. It's being restricted right now because of this whole water situation and, you know, we got some other issues that we're dealing with as well. Housing is big. That's why I want to know where we're going with all this, respective to housing, sewer, streets, food, food and water, like the top of the list there, recreation, activities, so on and so forth, trash refuse. We can we can continue on there. So we have to work in concert together, all of us, to to get to to get to the right conclusion. Just the stakeholders that we happen to represent happen to be the large entities as well as individuals. So we we have to answer to everybody, every individual in this town.
Okay. Are there other questions?
I have one more.
Okay. And there's and Yoli's behind you as well.
Yoli Montana. Everything Cindy said, I concur with. I'm I'm really concerned, even though I don't I don't think we're anywhere near being close to being out of the woods. And you said it'll take two years to get back into the state we're in now?
Stage Two.
Stage Two. So how long? How long will it take to implement Plan One?
Years.
I think that's what he was saying, like it could be up to 20 years depending on.
Exactly.
Sorry, Jeff, I'm not meaning to answer for you.
This is just smokescreens because I just feel like we're in we need storage, we need to conserve still. And as when Cindy was talking about growth and major developers, stakeholders have these great ideas, but at the end of the day, it really the buck stops with the city. So we can't stop growth. We can manage that. That's our that's the city's job to do, especially in situations like this. And with infrastructure like you were speaking with, we need to start making our our developers pay for infrastructure and saltwater and all that, not just our residential, you know, raising taxes every year for every household on the flats or on the hills when these big developers are coming in. We're paying all the fees for these infrastructures. So as so as as far as I'm concerned, we are nowhere near being out of the woods and Cindy's concerns are so valid and we I don't think we should just say, oh, we have tons of water, you know? I mean, we need to educate our residents, we need to give them education flyers, we still need to conserve, keep restrictors on. I mean, I have a restrictor on one of our buildings and they're still getting water, you know? I mean, it's not a huge, you don't really see a difference. I mean, we really need to still be very conservative and educate our residents because two years is going to go by like that and we're going to be in the same situation and we're going to have all this tension between our community and we need to work together to 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 get through this. 20 years, I mean, this is ridiculous.
So when Yoli, before you go, as a as a planning commissioner, I would urge you to, if you haven't already, read parts of the tariff because in in that capacity, I myself didn't understand that when a project comes before the planning commission and it has its Edison allocation, previously, I was thinking, okay, well, Edison said there's enough water and all is good, so well, it'll I don't have any other reason to say no. So but we do. We've always had the ability, the city has always and historically had the ability to say no. And that's what the tariff says all the way back to two or three versions ago, which is one of them that I have, that the city can make the the determination not to grant further a building permit if that it has the ability to do that. So that's where Annie was saying earlier, the city has the ability to do that. I didn't understand that previously.
And remember.
But it is in there.
At the last council meeting, the city council adopted the growth resolution, which established the fact that every project, regardless of what Edison says that there's water, the city still has to determine based upon the city's policies and the city's independent determination that there's sufficient water for this project.
But then in all fairness, the, you know, if a project came before the planning commission that wanted to build a brand-new, I don't know, 120-room hotel, that's quite a bit different than a single-family residence that comes in and wants to convert one room into two rooms. I mean, so that so we can't just arbitrarily cancel everything out. So, you know.
Each project is separately reviewed. That's what the growth policy that the council adopted last last meeting says.
Thank you.
If I may, just, Yoli, just to mention that the council has been very forthright in doing what you had suggested there is that development needs to pay its own way. So we have proposals we'll bring at the next meeting where we've done a request for qualifications of of firms that do development impact fees. And these are this is to pay for, help pay for their share of what their 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 shared cost is of impacts, whether it's on the treatment plant, whether it's on streets, whether it's on housing, whether whatever that impact may be. And and so that is very much your point is very much in the mind of us, that development should pay its own way. Just one last thing that your comment in relationship to growth, even if the city had all the capacity of water wished, and this is go back to Councilmember Cassidy's comment, even if it had all the sewer capacity, even it had all the road capacity, state law in California under the police powers gives cities the right to determine what level of growth they 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 will have. And cities throughout the state, they have different policies, some have none, some have many, but the city government has that ability with the input of its citizenry to determine. So the more so that goes back to the point that earlier is the more we know about what people are thinking about and doing, the more the residents and the council can make wise decisions about what it wants to do. So so but the development impact fees were on that and we'll be bringing the next meeting of that preferred person to do the development impact fee, fee. But Mr. Greenlaw is is I know he's right. He's he's reviewing those as maybe as we speak. So.
Thank you.
So we hear you.
So, you know, this is all nice, but it really is not what I think we need to be focusing on right now. At some point, some report that's a bunch of pages is going to be presented to you. It's pretty much clear that Edison's going to do whatever it wants to do, doesn't seem to be listening to anybody. And that's why I'm going to sound the alarm again. You and we, the city, need to take control of this. Just listening to the conservative projections, which are clearly based on the realization the plant number one is done for. It's not economical to run, they don't want to buy the parts for it, it's not going to keep going. So we're basically where we were in 2013. We have one plant. Maybe it's a little newer, maybe it's a little better. So in January of 2013, there was 657 acre feet in Middle Ranch. That's 100 acre feet less than we have today. In April, we're in April, we're already ahead of that timeline. 20 months later, we were in Stage Two. So for all the projections, I'm sorry, you can't predict a storm that knocks out the the wells or plant number two, for some reason, they run into some production problems or the economy goes crazy and we have more people coming. Or people here were no longer in conservation and they used the same amount of water they used before we went into it. So to not pay attention to this and look at these tariffs, which everybody is saying no longer fit our community, and say, timeout, we're going to open up these tariffs, we're not going to go back to the baseline that gives me 16 gallons a day because that's totally ridiculous. We're going to sit down and we're going to go through these tariffs with the understanding that it's likely we're going to be in Stage Two again if we don't do something before any of this comes to pass, let alone talking about how you even come up with the money to do this. But the other real thing that's being brought up is what is the cost going to be to our citizens now? Edison has incurred costs despite our $1 million of taxpayer money to defray some of it. I really need to know, how much am I going to be paying for water in the next six months or a year? You know, we got an electric increase. I don't know if any of you suddenly realized like, oh, my bill's gone up 30 bucks a month. They changed everything around, but it's an. changed everything around, but it's an increase. It's harder to see that it's an increase, but it's an increase. Well, the same thing's going to happen with water and we need to know that earlier rather than later so that all of us can make our plans. And I'm hoping that the report that referred to the production is available to us. And I really would like to see what the production was in 2013 when we only had plant number one, because I think we need to vet these things. I don't think we can just take the word for it and that we should have some input into how these projections are being made and what kind of decisions are being made based on those. Thank you.
Thank you Pam.
Couple of questions on the D cell. Is there a point that when we're in surplus years where we have 80, 90, 100% capacity at Thompson reservoir, where the D cells are curtailed to virtually nothing because of course it's not economical and we have cheaper water at Thompson? At what point, if we were in a, going from overflowing the reservoir down to 600 acre feet, is there some point in there where Edison is required to begin utilizing the D cells to the fullest extent as far as they can without overflowing the Baker root tanks?
So it's, it's something that we're looking at. We now have additional production available from, from plant number two. The, there is a cost impact to running the desalination plants, as you mentioned. The groundwater is significantly cheaper. So we will, will strike a balance between rate payer impacts for the, the cost it is to produce water versus what our supply is. And so what we're attempting to do is to make our water system more drought resilient and position ourselves to, to slow down the drawdown at the reservoir. But there will be some mix of groundwater and desalination water to, to meet the demand of the community. I don't have exact numbers. It would be an operational decision at the appropriate time.
But how do you know what you charge the customer? Because D cell water is so much more expensive than reservoir water.
There's an upcoming rate case.
It's what?
There's going to be a rate case.
So in our previous rate case, they forecast groundwater and, and desalinated water in our portfolio and then a price per unit is established. And that'll need to be done in the next rate case. If, if we change the portfolio and start increasing D cell production, there is a cost impact to our customers.
If I may just say what we, what we did in Lake Arrowhead, I know you're sick and tired of talking about Lake Arrowhead. But in Lake Arrowhead, we have a drought rate because we have water from the lake that is cheap. It's right there. We just suck it out. It's just the cost of doing it. We don't have to pay for it. It's right, it's right there. When we get to a certain level, we, we import the water. And so what in Lake Arrowhead we have is we have a drought rate. So whenever we're impacting the water, we're not taking it from the lake that's really cheap, then the, in Lake Arrowhead, the council is the rate setters. They have a public hearing and they raise the rates during that time when the cost is born. So that's one mechanism, how communities do it, to just offset the cost during that time period when those measures are being used.
Does Arrowhead, Arrowhead provide their own water?
Yes.
The water provider, okay.
We, we, we provide 15, you know, we have lake wells. We, we have different costs. We have lake, which is free because this is there. Wells, which we have to give more. And then if it's really bad, we import it from the state, which means you have to suck it up the hill through a big straw. And that's the most expensive one. That's five, five times as much as water that's in the lake because we have to suck it up the hill.
Madam Mayor?
Wait, Bruce, are you?
I had, I did have one or two more questions. When the D cell plants are, their use is curtailed, are you going to have a program of some kind of monthly operation to make sure that they will be truly standby and truly ready to go when you do get down to the point where you need them?
Yeah, we, we have maintenance plans for both plant one and plant two that when, when we're in off peak years, we, or off peak seasons, we, we take that opportunity to maintain both plants and seawater wells.
Right. One last one. This is all about D cell. Are you looking at, are you looking at additional well sites around Thompson or anywhere else? There's been test wells that have been drilled in a lot of different places. Are you looking at trying to introduce any of them into the system?
Yeah, there's a number of, one thing I wanted to go back to Cindy, to your point. This is a study of the, the desalination system. We are probably looking at a two to three year project, depending on the outcome of grant funding for this proposed phase one. But there are a number of other projects that we're looking at to, to bring additional sources of water to, to our system. A number of those are in, you know, conceptual phases. When we have a feasibility study done and it looks like a viable project, at that point in time, we'll publicly, publicly communicate what those projects are. But we do have test wells at Middle Ranch and we have run some pump tests. And I'm not aware of what the results of those pump tests are, but that is one of the projects that we're looking at is additional wells at, at Middle Ranch.
Other question?
Go ahead Dave.
Question, Jeff, and thank you for, oh, the gentleman. When you factor in what the cost is to ratepayers for use of D cell, which of course the city has had since the eighties, D cell one, I, I didn't know it was broken, that it had to be replaced. But I guess, I didn't know that, but that's a sidebar.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
No, I, I didn't know that it wasn't working or had to be replaced immediately. But that's not my question. So if, if, so what is the, do you factor in the cost to ratepayers? When you talk about the cost of D cell, I say you, but shouldn't we factor in the cost of having, being in stage three drought and the impact of that cost on people getting fined, businesses, you know, enormous fines, people who are residential, who, who for good reason maybe use more water, people having to ship laundry over, is that somehow can, is there a way of capturing what that real cost is versus, you know, so having less water or having no water, that is a cost too. And I'm, and I, there must be some way of factoring in that cost when you're thinking about, well gee, is D cell expensive? Well, how about no water? Isn't that kind of expensive too for tourism, for filling rooms, for, you know, and, and there is a cost associated with that too. Is that, is that fair? Is that a fair?
Yeah, I think so. I, I'm, I'm not in our regulatory group and not involved in the, in the rate case filings. But there was a significant resistance to the rate increases in the last rate case. And those, a lot of the, the increases that were being asked were to retroactively finance some projects that brought additional reliability and, and water supply to the system. So we would expect, you know, those cost increases to be challenged in, in future rate cases. But it certainly is a factor, but.
I just one question. So there probably, just like you're saying in Lake Arrowhead, there's, there's a well water rate, probably what it takes to do that. There's a, there's a D cell water rate. And then there is, then there is the rate for the water that's not sold. So the water that hasn't been sold, is that at a much lesser rate when these rate cases come forward?
That is a brilliant question.
He said he doesn't deal with the rate cases.
There is nothing more frustrating than, than seeing, I don't know what the, what the, whatever the request is that, that Edison wants to be repaid for the water that it hasn't sold during drought. What, Pam, what's that called? I know you know what that's called.
There's a number of costs for it.
Yeah. But, but, so Edison will, will put in for reimbursement for the amount of water that they haven't.
So it'd be interesting to know what that rate is.
That's a good question. Could we find out what that rate would be at?
I, I think there, there's discussions about having somebody from our regulatory and compliance group come and talk about some of those, those financial impacts and, and be able to educate the community on, on rate making and those types of questions. I think in the example that, that Scott gave in Arrowhead, when you have the ability to adjust rates in the present, because you're bringing in more expensive supply water, you can, you can immediately pass along those costs to customers. I, I believe in that type of situation, then you don't have the issue of lost revenues because water sales were, were, were lower. So there, there's two different systems. And so you, you, you can't have the best of both worlds. There, there is a rate of return that utilities earn on their infrastructure and they forecast a certain number of sales to get that return. And if you fall short of that return, then there generally is an adjustment in, in rates down the road.
So clearly I'm in the wrong line of business because I would love to be guaranteed a certain amount of money per year. I mean, it's, it's not your fault, but it's just so frustrating. And it's hard to explain that, okay, so it's, so it's a dollar hypothetically, it's a dollar a gallon for Middle Ranch water. It's $5 a gallon for D cell water. And you get to charge us whatever that rate is for the water you don't sell. Plus you get to charge a fee for those that use more water than what they were given at that, at whatever stage rationing. So it's, it's just really frustrating.
It's a complicated system, but it's the system adopted by the state of California. It's, it's not just specific to Southern California Edison. But a lot of those questions and concerns, again, when we have our regulatory person attend a council meeting, he'll be better equipped to answer the questions.
That could be a fun one.
And I think that we're in a perfect position to change the system, aren't we? I mean, we, it seems like it's, we keep hearing for years and years and years, what a unique system Catalina has. Well, let's, let's change this. It's the way the state's always done it.
Well, rate, rate making for state regulated utilities is consistent throughout California. So you have water municipalities that don't fall under the California Public Utilities Commission that have a different rate making structure. But for all utilities under the just, the regulation of California Public Utilities Commission, rate making is, is fairly consistent across the state.
But, but if I may, I, I think though, to go back to Ms. Albers' question and that tags along with your question, is that should the, should the tariff itself that applies to this unique place, given these unique circumstances, it is not like the Central Valley or it's not like Sacramento with Cal water or Orville or any, Orville's got plenty of water. But so, so maybe the company should, you know, you can't make this decision tonight, but maybe they should consider that, looking at that tariff and, and, and reexamining it in ways that are-
I think you might be talking about different tariffs. We jumped, I think, from a rate discussion to maybe water allocations.
Well, there's water allocations, which in part, because if, if you don't sell water, then you raise the rates because to offset, to make the profit, which is, it was a fascinating conversation. But, but let's just say that maybe the whole system needs to be evaluated in relationship to this unique situation. And maybe the Edison would be receptive to that at some point along the line.
Yeah, I, I think we'd be happy to have those discussions with the city and other stakeholders.
Question about this state, phase one that we're talking about. You said two to three years to get it implemented? Is that, is that what you said? Because it was, we bantered about, little conversation about 20 years. How, how long will it take to get stage, phase one in, implemented?
Upon the state of California.
So this is our strategy and our thinking when we looked at this phased approach. Phase one, the half a million gallons, we wrote a grant application to USVR for $750,000 for half a million gallons in storage. So we are thinking that if we were to get that grant, we could implement, we could possibly implement some of that storage. That one, I believe, is a matching grant. So with a million and a half, we might be able to get a half a million, a half a million dollar, a half million gallon tank going as far as engineering, planning, construction. So, and then with, if we do get, if the guidelines come through for the D cell grant, it's a $3 million grant, that was the stage three or the, the third round of grant funding was a $3 million grant, a $3 million match. So if we were to get that, well then we could start on, on the second phase, which would be additional storage in the wells. And that was our, that was our strategy and thinking for those, those phases. You know, there's a lot of hypotheticals in there, but you know, you have to start someplace. So we're trying to use the money strategically and implement as quickly as possible.
To ask and, and put that in, in, into play with the system already online, so that all we have to do is build, first build the tank. Is that what you're saying? And then what's the timeline on that? 750,000 gallons, matching grant, half a million gallons of water. How long are you talking about?
To build the tank?
Yes.
So with that grant, we should know in June. That's when the, if we receive the grant funding, we're supposed to be notified in June, I believe, June or July. And then, and then it's just engineering plans and, and implementation. I believe that grant has to be completed in permitting. And the grant has requirements for when you have to complete the project. And I can't remember if it's the two or three year, we did three grants at the same time. It's either two or three years. I believe it's three years.
Is that when construction starts?
It has to be completed.
Oh, it has to be completed within two or three years. And is the city aware of this? Is staff working with them on this? Or is that just Edison going?
The USVR, the, Ms., I'll think of her name in a minute, but there is, there is the 500,000 gallon tank. We're aware more recently that that, there has been a Bureau of Reclamation grant. And what I thought I heard, to go back, I thought I heard that if there were other monies available, state monies, that, that's this, that is it possible that the half million gallon project could really be a million gallon project if there were sufficient funds and you match state then with federal funds so that, so that you, you have really, if there, if those funds were available, that you would then, you could marry those two sources and have a larger storage project in phase one?
Right. They look very favorably on being able to, to leverage different pots of money for projects and from stakeholders. Also, I just wanted to make one clarification. Plant one is not broken. It's just aging.
Well, I have a 57 Triumph. It's old too. And, and, but, 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 but it, but it still runs. And I guess the question becomes, I, and not that a Triumph is commensurate with, I mean, I guess the question is, there was some illusion that the plant has to be replaced. And, and so that was generated, the question, gee, I, you know, we didn't know that. I assumed that with proper maintenance, with proper repair parts, it may not be as efficient as a new plant, but, but it still is operable if it's maintained, just as my 57 Triumph is if I maintain it. And maybe that's a bad analogy, but I was just trying, trying to clarify if, if the plant was kaput or if it was-
But I'm confused. Are you saying that they're not maintaining plant one?
No, I was, no, I was, no, no, no. Well, I was, well, I, first of all, I don't know when they're on or off. But, but no, my, no, my question was based on the statement that plant number one had to be replaced. And, and so that, I, and so I understood maybe, gee, are we talking about right now? Are we talking about later? And I don't know what the life, what the life is if it's properly maintained. And that's where my question came from. I wasn't saying it wasn't. I was just listening to what you were saying.
And that'll be a great question for Val because he has so much experience with the life of desalination plants, especially ones that are 20 years old. I mean, the, my understanding is that it would be prudent planning, to be planning in the future to start replacing RO units as we go forward. The plant's maintained and operational now, but it would just be prudent planning for the future.
Well, it's, it's just like a wastewater treatment plant that you plan for its ultimate replacement over time. And then I, what I hear you saying now is that, that is prudent. And I would agree, that is prudent.
I've had a lot of constituents ask about, why don't, why aren't we offsetting the cost of our electricity with solar, a solar grid? And I want to continue pushing that and understand exactly what Edison's doing to experiment with that and push the parameters of, of the efficiencies that we're working with right now. I mean, electricity bills just went up 30%, I think. They were, they were talking about that down at the West End as well, throughout the whole island. If we're talking about a desalination unit that's not running very efficiently, it's old, it's getting dated and it needs repairs constantly. It's like his triumph that he was talking about, the more he uses it, I'm sure the more it breaks down. I understand that's part of this program here, but we have to offset some of these costs. We can't just keep, continue to, to, to build these, this huge infrastructure. And then the rates just keep on climbing and climbing and people, it's not even sustainable. We need to, we need, we need to provide the community with a more sustainable balance. We need to, we need to provide the community with a more sustainable balance, not just more bigger diesel generators, because then we're going to have to rebuild the power plant when we're talking about...
Well, I believe renewables have been studied, wind, solar, there have been studies done in the past, and I'm not able to speak to the results of those studies, but there are challenges in Catalina for renewable energy that we would have to overcome.
We've had people come to the council here that provided us with information on high efficiency wind turbine generators that actually make electricity, and I know that's something that Edison is probably not into supporting, but it's something that I think the city we should look into.
Do you have a place to put them?
Yeah.
And that's a discussion for another day.
Oh, no, it's not, it's a discussion for right now, because we need water right now, and we, we're not being promised that we're going to get water. I mean, we're being promised that Edison is working on this, and if they get the grant, we might have water in three years. That's what we're being promised.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the wind turbines and the other things.
Oh, that's exactly what I'm talking about. I'm talking about offsetting the outrageous costs that we're going to be facing in the near future because of these capital improvements that are being, you don't think that capital improvement cost isn't going to be passed down to the ratepayers?
Of course.
Sticker shock, guys, that's what we're going to get. Everybody's going to be, what is this? You know, and that's why it's important to talk about these things. Let's do something about it also, and let's have a Plan B. To Scott, if this, if it doesn't seem like this, this boat is going to float, we got to go, I mean, Yoli was right, we got to start thinking outside of the box, and Pam, and we got to understand, we got to go on without these guys, we got to figure out a plan for our community without Edison or utilize them in some way that benefits us in a timely manner.
At the appropriate time, Madam Mayor, maybe it isn't this evening, I know that Bob Greenlaw has experience with treatment plant, water, whether they're water or wastewater, that where they've used a solar to defray the costs or to reduce the cost of electrical use, and so those, that would be good information that would be, could help do what you're suggesting is offset, because we're using a more efficient and less costly technology.
We've been budgeting $500,000, right, for the next, what, 10 years for reclaimed waters, correct? And every day, we expel 200,000 gallons of fresh water, our fresh water, into the ocean that goes through the desalination plant, maybe more or less. That's our water, everything that goes down the drain that you wash your dishes with, we could be purifying that, reclaiming it, and pumping it back over the hill and utilizing that for our efficiency and efficiency, maximum efficiency for the community, and...
Did you say we send 200,000 gallons of treated water to the ocean?
We, we, no, we, we, we probably, however many gallons you guys sell us, that's what goes down into the drains and that water then becomes the City of Avalon's water. That's what I'm saying.
He's saying the outpour from the wastewater treatment plant, not from the Edison plant.
What we process, we're throwing away, and actually, we own that water. That's something we need to think about as well. We're throwing away 200,000 gallons of fresh water, it's a little bit dirty, we need to clean it up, pump it back over the hill, and use it for things like washing our cars and our sidewalks and our gardens and our landscaping, and we would have plenty of water in that light. We got to start thinking outside the box here. Edison is not going to do everything for us, they're just, they're telling us right now, they're going to give us a storage tank in three years, they're going to give us a desalination unit, and that's if everything goes as planned, if there's no hangups. And we all know, construction projects on Catalina go twice the, twice the amount of time that people, look, Vons was supposed to start the store a year and a half ago, they didn't even break ground yet, they haven't even completed one condition of approval. I mean, wait till they start building, that's going to be a nightmare, because, so it's going to be the same thing with water, and we need to come up with a solution here, because what I'm hearing is three years away.
And then let me just remind you as well, Councilman Sampson, since we activated stage two water rationing, we've installed a brand-new desalination plant capable to produce a significant amount of water on a daily basis, so to say we haven't done anything is inaccurate.
The reason you started the desalination unit was because we pushed you so hard.
In partnership with the city, absolutely.
I was told that you will never get a desalination unit, that's what I was told, when I became a city councilman, and then they said it's going to be $60,000, $80,000. Okay? I mean, it's 60 or 80 million dollars, excuse me, that was, mis-speak there, but it ended up being what, a nine million or something, nine and a half million, two and a half million for the unit, and then another seven million for installation, I believe?
Much less than that.
Okay, great, much less, how much less?
It's going to be about a $4 million project.
This, this unit that we put in here?
Hmm.
Really? So the desalination unit was two and a half million, and you're saying that it was only a million and a half to install it?
I don't understand your question.
The General Electric Desalination Unit, RO unit, that was purchased by the city and Edison, that is now functioning, and you refer to it as Unit Two, was two and a half million dollars to purchase, correct? How much was it?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember.
You don't know?
Well, he can give us those numbers if it's important.
You guys don't know?
I don't remember.
You have no idea? What are we paying for them? Does anybody know how much we're paying for?
The original cost was going to be $2 million.
There's civil work, there's mechanical work, there's equipment, there's engineering, it's a complicated, extensive project.
The people that purchased, that are your ratepayers would probably want to know what that cost is, and it'd be, it'd be wise for us to know if we're in the market of purchasing another one, and, like, I'm going to get back to my point, the reason that we have that system is because we pushed it so hard from this dais up here, because I, we were told you're not getting a desalination unit, going into even, even the phases that we were going in. Edison can't say, oh, yeah, it was, it was, it was something that was pushed from up here, that's what I'm saying.
It was definitely a partnership with, with the city, with the county, with Southern California Edison, I can't speak to who told you we would not install a desalination plant.
I've got emails from Ron Garcia, they said you won't get a desalination unit because it's too expensive, it's going to cost you $60 million. Well, it wasn't 60 million, was it? And we have it now. So what I'm saying is that you can, your will of the people can be, can be construed as something that is viable, and it needs to be heard, and these people are the ones that are the ratepayers, they pay your paycheck, and they're the ones that need to understand what's going to be happening in the future, how much it's going to be costing. I mean, if nobody knows how much the desalination unit costs that we have right here, I want to know. Next time you come up here, let us know exactly how much it costs. I heard it was two and a half million dollars and it cost $7 million to install it. Now, that's permitting, construction work, how much does it cost to pay a crew six months labor, 24 hours a day, on an emergency install?
With all due respect, your numbers are off, and we should be talking about actual numbers.
Okay, how do you know my numbers are off when you don't even know?
Just, okay, just chill, everyone.
Just chill. Wait a minute now, I've been interrupted many times by this gentleman, okay? And I'm getting to the top, I'm getting to where I don't need this, the people don't need this. When you interrupt me, you interrupt the people that I represent, that's what I'm saying, I don't like this, being disrespectful.
I've interrupted you this evening?
This evening, yes, you have, and you've interrupted me in several other meetings. And I get, I get emails from it, it's like, how come you let him talk to you like that? Okay? It's because I'm a very patient man, and I'm a very, I'm a very giving man, but I can only take so much, and I'm not getting the answers I want. You just sat here and told me my numbers are off, but you, and then a couple seconds before that, you said you don't know the numbers. What is it? Do you know the numbers?
I told you what the total cost was, and it's significantly below the numbers you're throwing out there.
How much?
The total project is going to come in around $4 million.
$4 million? Okay, I'd like to know exactly what that, what that cost is.
I'm sure that can be given to us.
Wonderful, now we need a solutions, and it needs to come from the dais, because I don't think, I don't think Edison's going to come through for us, honestly. I mean, we have the three-year plan, and we could be back in stage one in three years, and that is if everything goes as planned. So I'm not very thrilled about this presentation right now, as you can tell.
That's okay, this is the beginning of a presentation, and I appreciate you all coming here, and, and Kim Brown, thank you for coming as well. We look forward to Mr. Frankel coming, we have a few questions that came out of this place today, and we will proceed and move forward.
And Madam Mayor, if people have further questions, if they would kindly get those to, either to you and then to us, we'll forward those questions to Edison, and we'll have written responses to every question that is asked. And there are not stupid questions, they're just, whatever questions you have, please ask them, and I know that our friends at Edison will, will be happy to respond in writing, and we'll make that available to the community, Mayor.
And please don't send those questions to me.
To me is fine.
Okay, send them to the city manager.
Can I just ask, I think we've exhausted our time for tonight, but for the next meeting, because I'm pretty sure we're probably not going to have the formal presentation at the next meeting, but could you guys come back and do a very thorough explanation as to why we actually went into phase three water rationing? Based on, you know, the numbers, based on what the tariff says, you know, based on the, the idea that the county paid money, the city paid money to, you know, keep us out of phase three? I don't, I'm not suggesting that you're prepared to do that tonight, but could you be for the next meeting?
I think we're not, you're not proposing to address that question the same night that Val is, is...
No, because I'm pretty sure Val Frankel is not going to be here at the next meeting.
No, I believe it's either going to be...
We haven't gotten the report yet, so that's why I'm saying, can we, can we piece this out? Because if I don't myself understand why we even went into phase three, I know that there's other members of the community that I'm not the right person to answer that question for.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer the question, I think we perhaps have exhausted our time tonight, but I can, I can certainly attend a future meeting and be happy to discuss that with you.
Thank you.
Sure.
And we will still be getting, still be getting the reports in stage one, because it'll be curious to see if the people really have said, oh, now we're in stage one, so what, that. Will you still be giving us those reports on water usage going forward?
So we wanted to actually meet with staff and council about that, and Adeline and I will be reaching out to you to find out what's the appropriate messaging moving forward now that we're in stage one. I don't think it was something we did previously in stage one, but we're happy to accommodate.
I mean, I think for the next few months, it's pretty critical to see if people have just gone, hallelujah, and the showers are on. And I still have a request, and I don't, Cindy, you talk about it all the time, and I brought it up, the vacation rentals being in the residential stock, that is a number that, I don't know if you can even do random samples of things to see if the tenants, if the residents of Avalon versus the vacation rentals, I don't, I don't know, I still think that's always important to know, if there's a big difference in the water usage, you know? Because a lot of us don't have 10 people living in our houses, for example, but, but we're also, those 10 people aren't living there year-round. So, so I don't know, I just think it would be a comparison, because if we go as we move forward, and like you're talking, Cindy, and everybody talks about growth and whatever, if things have to change, we need to know from where they should change, like, do we try to get residents here, I mean, visitors here on a year-round basis and plug 10 people into these places? You know, I mean, I think that for a, for a look at conservation on our level, those kinds of things, I think would be nice.
Can I just have one more question about what you're talking about? And I don't know if it's answered, a question Jeff can't answer, or the city, or Scott. Oh, Scott, you are the city. With the vacation rentals, that's a business permit, and that's a CUP, which conditional use permit through the city, and it, that is requiring them, allowing them to do business out of their home, which is vacation hotel. So would, that's categorized in this, I mean, if you think about it, a business, which is commercial from the city, so how would you, like, to me, I don't think that's, I think it's, it's not accurate when, when it's still considered residential, when they have CUPs on that house or unit duplex, whatever. So is that something that Edison can change, or is that something that the city can change moving forward, or is that something we can't change, and then we're not going to get real accurate numbers regarding this? I mean, it is a business.
Right.
So, I mean, I had that question when I was on the commission, because it's so confusing to me.
I mean, is there a way to give Edison the list of those that are CUPs, or vacation rentals, or those kinds of things, and they could be somehow coded?
Well, it's a business, and so as a business, as a hotelier and any other business, we are paying higher rate. So that too is not fair. So, I mean, they're running a business, so I'm just saying, is that something we can look into?
Other rentals got variances, quite a few of them got written variances and gave them to Edison, and they got to use more water.
Well, I have a variance too, I mean...
I know, but I was going to say, a lot of them, when they do that, they get a variance, so I don't know if you could track their water usage that way, or how you could do it, but it seemed to be a pretty tough task.
Well, Scott has a comment.
We have a list of vacation rentals, and we can supply to Edison.
Can we change the use?
No.
Again, the use, the use for those units, the city can call it a residential use or a, or a, or a commercial use, but Edison and its rate structuring, they set it as a residential use, and until the rate structure is changed, we can't change that. So that would have to be changed as part of that process.
But we can, we can, we can actually back the change, though, if we did, right?
Wouldn't that be something that would be a good thing? I mean...
Yeah, it would be a question when we have a regulatory person come and be able to talk to the tariffs and that question specifically, but when the city issues a conditional use permit, it's still zoned for residential, right? It's considered a residential dwelling.
Oh, right.
And that's, you know, it's on the electric side, it's consistent, when an owner moves out and starts renting the property, it's still a residential dwelling and remains on a, on a residential rate.
But I think you, I think knowing the difference between me and a Catalina vacation rental is important for planning purposes.
There's four people coming up in the house.
Exactly. Okay, you've been very thorough, very patient, thank you, very...
Thank you.
And Dale is here, but Dale, is this about water?
I just want to say one thing about water, and I have something else to say.
I just want to say that I've been listening to Edison for a long time, and we have to put pressure on them. If we don't, I see this water problem being not even solved in a decade, decades with an S. It doesn't seem, it seems like they're fishing for different ways of getting money and all of this, but it doesn't seem like really things are getting done. A year goes by, another year goes by, you got to put more pressure on them to fix this problem. This is not going to go away easily, and we need to put as much pressure on them as possible to fix this, or it just seems like it's just going to go on and on and on, looking for money, looking for ways out of fixing it. I mean, doesn't seem like they're, it seems like every time they come, they just give us these reports, and, I mean, telling us we have rain and aren't we lucky we have water, when it doesn't seem like much is really happening. That's all I want to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay. All right.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you, Kim.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Okay, do we have any announcements? Oh, we have an announcement by Bob Mesher.
Oh, yeah. The Deacon.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, at the last City Council meeting, we stated that the mid-year financials results would be published by now, however, we have not yet been able to review the mid-year results, because we have been focused on the fiscal year 16 audit, which is near completion. Shortly after our audit work is completed, the mid-year financials will be published and then updated monthly on our website. We realize both of these reports are important to be completed as soon as possible, and we are diligently working to make that happen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a gentleman in the audience that hasn't been introduced yet, were you going to do that under city manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right, so, okay, any more announcements, written communications? Okay, city manager report.
Thank you. Let me just mention for those who are watching and those in attendance, that there has been a request made to pull an item off or to continue an item that's on the agenda regarding the Catalina Yacht Club lease extension, the end of it. Mr. Barb could not be here, he apologizes, but asks that the matter be continued. Just wanted to mention before I introduce Mr. Greenlaw is that we have gotten, we've done an experiment on translation from English to Spanish and of our, of the management update and we'll use that as a format, we hope by next week to have that done. And we have some people who are speaker, who speak Spanish here internally, who've reviewed the translation and they seem to think that it's good. I'm excited about that and I might even revert into Spanish to talk about it, but I won't. But I could do that.
Bueno.
Bueno, que bueno que todo está bien y estamos aquí. And anyway, we're all here, everything is good and we're here. It's really an honor and a pleasure for me to Madam Mayor and Council Members, community, to introduce Bob Greenlaw, Robert Greenlaw. He is our new Director of Public Works and he, it comes to us as no stranger to cities, he comes no stranger to public and private sector construction and management. Bob most recently worked for the City of San Luis Obispo as the, as the handled all construction activities for that city, including commercial developments, residential tracks, capital improvement projects. He's intimately familiar with development impact fees and how they work and he was with the City of Chico as a senior civil engineer and eight years with Butte County, with similar duties there in that county. He has extensive experience obtaining and managing grants. He is a registered civil engineer with degrees in civil engineering and business administration. Most importantly, he has two children, Kyle is a buyer at Tackle Warehouse, as well as an avid fisherman and Brianna is a senior engineering student, runs in the family at Cal Poly. His wife Lori is an elementary school teacher and we're very happy to have Bob join our staff.
Welcome aboard.
You're welcome.
Honorable Mayor, Council Members, it is truly an honor to serve in this position here at the City of Avalon. First off, I'd like to say that the city family and the community has welcomed me with arms wide open and I appreciate that very much so in the first seven days that I've been here. What I've observed in my first seven days is that we have a staff that is very dedicated and wants to do a lot of good for this community. I've also observed a lot of opportunities that we have for capital projects, for infrastructure that we need to improve and just opportunities that I've also discussed with the city manager and I'd like to share with you over a period of time. I plan on being here for an extended period of time, serving this community. I come here with a skillset that is, has depth and breadth as the city manager has related here to you and I think that I can help to establish our young personnel and develop them and that I can also make the contacts that I have statewide and also with my federal connections to bring significant grant funding and so I plan on bringing significant value to this community. I'm here to answer any questions that you have of me.
I would just like to say, unless you have found housing, are you still in need of finding housing?
Yes, I am.
So, anybody out there that knows, I know, if I may say, because we discussed it in television land is where I'm also talking, but I think you said you'd prefer a two-bedroom if possible?
Yes.
So, anyway, so you've all met Bob, so if anybody knows of any housing, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Bob.
Welcome.
It's a pleasure. Welcome.
Okay, city manager, any other reports?
No, no, Madam Mayor.
Okay, city attorney?
Two things, in the next couple of months, you'll be seeing some changes as we implement new provisions of the Brown Act, both in terms of how we notice things and how we provide public comments in case anyone needs a translation. So, there are new rules that go into effect actually in January of 2018, but we're going to be ahead of the game and try and get those changes in effect sooner. And again, as a reminder, at the next meeting, I'll be with my wife, celebrating our 25th anniversary and so Elizabeth Hall will be at the meeting and we're going to try and concentrate to the extent that she's, since she's here, on redevelopment and housing issues. And if you have any questions, she'll be happy to answer them.
Council member reports, who would like to begin?
I have none.
None, I have none either. Let's see, I attended West End Stakeholders Meeting, Water, this was the day after our last council meeting. I was at the Isthmus, so I drove down there, took some time off work and I wasn't surprised that, they have the same concerns as we do as far as tariffs go. They, it was, the time that they went on to, they went off of Stage Three and back into Stage One was, it was like a couple of days after we did, so they were pretty excited about it, but they had the same concerns that we do. What indicators does Edison use to go from one stage to the other? And down at the West End, apparently what it is, is its wells. And actually, since Jeff Lawrence was two hours late to the meeting, I'd gotten there on time, it was, there was a lot of, there were stakeholders from the West End, from Highlands Landing, Emerald Bay, USC had a big, strong presence of people there and there was a gentleman, Orlynda was there and also Pamela Manning were there as well. And they got up and spoke a little bit. David Ford was there from Edison and he kind of killed the time while we waited for Jeff to show up. He finally showed up and gave them the same presentation that we got here, which was, I don't know about that, I don't know how, if that was a great thing. They also complained about the rate increases as far as electricity down there. I have, there was quite a few people there, there was probably 25 residents and so they were concerned about the tariff structure and they were asking about the atmospheric water generation systems that we had, had a presentation come here and I was, I always happened to be there, so I was, Jeff, David Ford didn't really know a lot about that, so I didn't either, but I let him know exactly what it was that I knew about it. Middle Ranch Reservoir at that time was 24 acre feet, we haven't had rain since then, so Jeff just announced tonight that was it, it was 524 acre feet, Jeff denounced it was 566 tonight, so it had gone up like 25 acre feet without any rain at all, so the water still, the reservoir's still getting water, which is a great thing. The next thing I wanted to ask was, you guys, nobody gave a presentation about, or an update on your PUC meeting that you had here, I don't know if that was a public meeting, but I'd like to know about it as the public has asked about it and we'd like to know if you guys had any traction with Rami Kulan or the Assemblyman's Office, are these guys going to go to bat for us? Senator Ben Allen is, do you have any updates? Because we were looking for some information about that. I wanted to know what you guys discussed and if you feel like you did make some progress with Edison in your negotiations.
We did.
And that's all my announcements, thank you.
Thank you.
But we did, yes, I do, because we did.
Yes, yes, we met with Edison, there were a number, I think seven members of Edison and you, council members described, our Assemblyman was well represented at that meeting, Rami Kulan, who's the Director of Water, Division of Water Quality for CPUC flew all the way down here from San Francisco to come to our beautiful island, he was impressed, I know first time here was what he said. There were a number of topics that we covered and I'm looking for my summary.
I would imagine they'll hit the paper tomorrow too, because it was in your management update.
Yes, it was and the, what, a few things stick out in my mind, one, they were talking about the pursuing grant opportunities and we indicated that, that when we are able to see what their master plan is, that we'll be in a position to, to make sure that we are assisting them to the extent that the council is comfortable with that master plan and getting grants. They've described a preliminary one tonight.
Did they promise a master plan?
Sir.
Excuse my-
Well, I did actually hear that word, those two words you used tonight and I was in, I got excited about it, but I didn't want to show too much excitement. That is, that is still a discussion. In fact, on the Planning Commission for this, this week's meeting, there is a proposal that you have directed, that the commission consider whether, whether the city should include in the general plan, a provision that the utility provide a water master plan like most other cities in California do and I'm hopeful that the commission will be supportive and recommend same to you. In addition, there was information that the city had been requesting through the city attorney for some time about production data on water, on DSal over the last year, since February, I believe, through January, Scott, correct me, and they did provide information about their production or lack of production of DSal units. There were some questions in relationship to that production as it relates to Stage Three and it tied in with some questions that Council Member Cassidy asked tonight, how did we get into Stage Three with two DSal units in operation? We also discussed the requirements that the city had entered into an agreement with the $500,000 that you contributed towards DSal Two and the fact that the county would also like to give money toward that to defer the impact on ratepayers for DSal Two. The city attorney and their attorney is, are discussing that topic because it's unresolved. Also, the city made clear that our desire or your desire is to see a revision in the tariff that would reflect a supply side, that we look at what we are capable of producing, not just wells in a reservoir in the middle of the island, that, that a tariff should be based on available water supply. And while Edison did not agree that they wanted to do that, they thought they had flexibility within the tariff, that they, they, we'll see if they can be persuaded in that regard and I'm always optimistic on, on things like that. And I believe, I believe that was the quick, it was about two hours, about two and a half hours, the city attorney or the mayor or council member Cassidy may have additional information about that meeting. I thought it was a good meeting, it was a good start, there's more to do, but-
Let me just add two things, for the first time ever, we actually have the production from, from the DSal plant and Edison is going to give that, us to that every month from now on. In addition to that, we did push hard on the tariff and we put our, put our position and what Edison said is while they're not going to revise the tariff now, they did indicate that once the DSal plant had a whole season of running and being up and running, they might consider revising the tariff to take into account the actual production of a whole year of the DSal plant being up and running. We pushed hard on that because of, again, it's still our position that the tariff should be based upon the ability to produce water rather than the reservoir levels. So, we'll, so we'll see and then if not, then we can, we'll talk about other avenues of getting the tariff revised. But, and again, I am working with, not working with, I am forcefully discussing with Edison's attorney, the additional money from the county and we are putting in additional safeguards and protections in our agreement with Edison in order for us to not give that county money until we're satisfied that they're actually using DSal plant number two.
And I also just want to say that even if, if they don't get the county money, the taxpayers are going to pay for it. So, it's in everybody's best interest to work together to get that county money because, you know, we're digging our heels in, they're digging their heels in, everybody's, you know, just packed up their toys and dusted them off, gotten out of the sandbox and, you know, we, the ratepayers as individual people, are the ones that are going to pay the price for, you know, whatever struggles you guys have. So, I mean, I'd like to just say, do whatever you have to do to get that money from the county. We need to be able to get the money.
I guess we have the money.
We have the money.
We just have to return it, yeah, if we don't get it.
We have the money, we have till December to work out an agreement, we discussed a preliminary outline of it and I'll be sending a draft to the Edison's attorney the end of this week. So, that will probably come up for council review, second meeting in August or the first meeting in May. And then there'll be a time period by which they have to actually produce things before we actually turn the money over.
And the city attorney has been working very hard, communicating very well with the Edison attorney to make this so and it, but as, to use the analogy that our council member used and I think it's appropriate, is that you have to have two people playing in the sandbox in order for there to be a game going on. And so, we're, so he's hopeful that, and we're hopeful that that will be resolved, we're persevering in that. And also, that the city did not invest, my understanding, you did not invest half a million dollars of public money in a, in a DSal plant that is not operating, you invested money to ensure that that plant operates and provides a supply to keep us out of droughts and that's just, just a general statement, but I, and that's what we were having that active conversation with Edison and that, in regard to that too.
And I agree with Cindy, the, for us to be explaining why they didn't operate, they can say it much more eloquently than us because they know exactly what it is and they need to hear it from them, not us.
Yeah, it is definitely not our responsibility as the city council to explain why we went into Phase Three or why-
Yes.
-a plant wasn't working or was working or, you know, it's just, it's too complicated for us to do it and it's not our place, it's theirs.
Okay. Mayor Portman?
Yes, ma'am. Last Wednesday, I went to the Contract Cities Meeting in Long Beach and unfortunately, we did not have a quorum, so no action could be taken.
They don't call you beforehand or people don't say, hey, we're going to be there.
They were begging for a quorum.
They do, they send emails.
There's a bunch of stuff to get voted out and it's-
Yeah. They send emails saying they need a quorum.
It was in the Skyrim, not in the Skyrim itself, in the building. It was good. Next Thursday and Friday, I'm going to be attending League of California Cities Revenue Tax Committee and Community Services Committee meeting in Ontario, Ontario, Ontario. Yeah, it should be, doesn't. And the second meeting in April, which is on the 18th of April, is right in the middle of spring break and I'm wondering if we would like to reschedule that meeting to like the 11th or after the spring break.
Council meeting?
By your command, yes.
Why? Why we all work, what do we, what do you think?
Some of us have kids that are in spring break. I'm a coach.
Is that Avalon's spring break too?
Yes.
April, what do you say?
Meeting scheduled for the 18th.
Bully.
And when did you want to move to the 11th, so we're back to back?
The 11th or the 28th.
Bully.
28th.
Dudley, somebody look at Dudley.
We have D and B here.
10th, 11th.
Okay, how about the 25th?
That's not good for me.
Yep, me either.
You can choose any day of the week, it doesn't have to fall on particular, whatever's your pleasure of the council.
Any day work with you, Ms. Marshall?
Well, you're talking that whole week, the 10th through the 14th, right? I mean, that third through the-
That's not our spring break.
Third through the 8th or the-
That's not our spring break.
17th through the-
17th through the 21st.
Well, I- I don't know, folks.
Well, one thing to consider-
You won't be here.
Well, no, I'll be here, but the question is, maybe we'll have the report and then we can, frankly, we can reschedule that meeting once we have the report, once we, once we know we have sufficient time for everyone to review that report.
Well, I won't be around from the 24th to the 29th of April.
The report-
The report, they were getting from Madison?
The promised report.
Why don't we just do it and get a lot of agenda on there and get it? I, I don't care, it doesn't matter to me. I'll, I'll be flexible. Whatever you guys want to do, you decide to do, I'll go with the program, okay?
When, when are you not going to be here?
I'm not going to be here the 24th, 24th to the 29th or so.
How about the 20th?
No.
I'm not going to be.
No.
Well, I schedule my spring break around with my family and my kids around, around the council meeting. So, I don't know, whatever you want to do.
I think it's staying on the 20th, on the 18th.
No problem.
It's the 18th?
Yeah, that's what the regular day is.
I'm sorry, Ollie.
Sorry, Ollie.
And then to go back to back, the 4th to the 11th or something.
Well, there's five weeks in, there's five weeks in May. Do we just do a meeting on the 30th or whatever that day is in May?
Memorial Day weekend.
That's the Tuesday after. So everybody's back at work and back in school.
We've got a council meeting on the 2nd anyway.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that's an option.
Cancel the 20th and cancel the 18th.
Cancel the 18th and then do three in May? I mean, we still have other city business besides water and other stuff to handle.
Well, not on May 23rd, is that?
No, I said May.
Well, I think let, let's, let's
May 30th.
Let's go forward with the next meeting anyway.
Well, maybe there's nothing going to be on.
Right. And then staff will determine if there's nothing to have a meeting for, we can cancel it. I know we do have some things for the next meeting.
Well, at some point, we're going to be scheduling some finance stuff, too, right?
Yes.
Oh, so maybe we do finance and budget related stuff other, outside of that.
We, we would be happy to work up what, what is, what is on, what we know is coming down and then provide that information to you. And then based on your availability, you can set meetings that are fit. I, I know for some of us, though, we will also be gone, so assuming that we can come back.
I can assure you, we don't have a lack of agenda items.
Even when they're just consent. We haven't even had consent.
Yeah, maybe for two and a half hours, then we have.
It's still business. It has to be done.
I totally understand. Okay.
I'm done.
But way to throw a monkey wrench into this one, Ollie.
My goal in life.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we're, I guess we're oral communications. This is opportunity for people from the community to talk on items not on the agenda. You'll be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken.
Good evening. Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. I stand here representing not only myself, but the Environmental Study Group of the Catalina Progressive Action Coalition. It's a group of citizens that are concerned not only about the environment in Avalon, but nationally, statewide as well. One thing that we would like to ask of you, and I think council member Cassidy brought this up last year, is to consider a styrofoam ban in the city of Avalon. Currently, according to the Californians Against Waste website, there are 99 cities and counties in California that have a styrofoam ban right now. And that particularly goes to takeout food. All those styrofoam containers, coffee cups, plates, all that kind of thing, although it can be more comprehensive. San Francisco has the premier styrofoam ban in the nation. However, Manhattan Beach, if you want to look at another city's ban, has an excellent one. And one thing that it would also target is events that happen in the city. Say somebody's running the baseball field, Spring Fest downtown, they sign a contract, they are not allowed to use styrofoam. So moving forward, we would hope that you would consider this. And yay, our Senator Ben Allen introduced SB 705, which is a statewide styrofoam ban. However, they're going to be looking at that next month, and it wouldn't even go into effect until 2021. So let's have Avalon be progressive and be green and get all of that great press about it and realizing styrofoam doesn't break down for hundreds, if not thousands of years, filling our landfill, destroying our ocean, destroying our planet. And we have children and grandchildren we need to take care of. So Earth Day's coming, keep that April 18th meeting and think about a styrofoam ban for Avalon, please. Thank you.
You know, and we have discussed that briefly up here, especially when, with the plastic bag ban. And there was a discussion because there were some progressive business people in town that used, did not use styrofoam. And there was a discussion about being able to order that stuff in large quantities. And I think with Jim Lutejohan, at one point, we, we'd even talked about getting people together, maybe get the producers or manufacturer of, of all that stuff. So if everybody bought, you bought in bulk, it would make it more palatable and that kind of thing, so.
There you go.
There you go.
Right.
And in large quantities, it might even be better. Were you going to say something?
I did, sir. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So if we wanted to proceed
You, you've already given direction on that, and I know that Mr. Hanky, Hunky is working on that.
Yes.
He's been delegated to that and he's working on it.
Thank you.
There's this.
Dan, do you have any announcements either, too, after, after Dale? Okay.
Hi, Dale Kendall. As you know, several meetings ago, I spoke about climate change and how it could affect Avalon. And I have found for our first meeting, some, a woman, her name is Hunter Phillips, and she has actually personally been trained by former Vice President Al Gore and the Climate Reality Project to serve as a volunteer climate reality leader. I've arranged with her to come to the island to talk to us, but we need a place to have a meeting. So I was wondering if we could use City Hall to have this meeting, how that works. I don't know who to talk to and how to arrange it. What I'm also hoping to do is I've, I've called the school because she's also been trained to talk to students about this. So she's willing to have an assembly at school if they want it in the morning and then have a meeting here for adults with us. But she's very, very flexible with her schedule. She has one family thing coming up, but I think it's going to be a real good start to the group that I'm forming, defend Avalon against climate change. So I don't know how it works, you know, using this room or any of that.
You can call Ms. Ratty?
Ms. Ratty.
Stand to 122.
122, okay.
And Chris Lowesbury, yes.
Exactly. And then go see Chris up at the school to see and
Okay, at this, I called the school, nobody called me back, so
I can give you the contact information, Mr. Kendall.
Okay, so I'll get that tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
But she's, seems really nice on the phone and she's all excited to come and help us, so, and inform us. So on the other front with the scientists that I've been speaking to, the, the report has still not been peer reviewed and it's, who knows, it could take months or, you know, six months. Nobody really knows. So I think this will be a real good start to a meeting and getting some education on how climate change is, could affect us in regards to the island and sea level rise.
Well, thank you for spearheading this, Dale.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, just give enough lead time so we can get everything advertised and all that good stuff. Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Lot of great things coming out of the Community Service Department, just want to touch base on. First one is Spring Fest. We're staking reservations for our Spring Fest booths. It will be Thursday evening, April 13th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. We're planning on having just a great evening that evening. We are also starting a new program. It is a tumbling and cheer class with Coach Caitlin. We're a couple of weeks out, we're taking reservations now, program registrations now. It'll start Friday, the 7th and Saturday, 8th, respectively, the two dates. Tomorrow, we've got 33 people signed up at this point, which is fantastic for painting with Portia, it's lunch and wine. If you were to call me early tomorrow morning, it's for our primetimers, 55 years or older. But we've got a lunch starting at 11:30 and we'll paint through till about 2:30. So a couple of spots left, I think we're taking 35-ish, we're at 33. We had 16 for the tile program last month, so we love to see the, the trend and where that's going. We are a few days away from having our spring/summer brochure available. It'll be out next week. We'll be touching on swim team, beach volleyball program, the outrigger program, a men's basketball spring league, some new things, as well as some, some fun programs that we've had ongoing. Beach bingo will be in there, the movie nights will be in there, those types of things. And I think lastly, one to just touch on, we had two things. 24 people attend, Councilmember Sampson was there as well, attend our outrigger program. It was just an orientation to the outrigger program, kind of what's coming up. Again, 24 people came out. We are making arrangements to one of two canoes. We should have those in the next couple of weeks. And we're starting this weekend, it's open. It'll be the next two Saturdays from 8:00 to 9:00. You can meet us on Step Beach for dry land workouts. We're going to do that for the next consecutive couple of weeks until we get the canoes on land and we'll get in the water with those. And then lastly, I'd like to give a little shout out to kids at play, Sean Brannick and his program that he is doing this weekend. It is as seen on TV, the Health Channel. This will be my first experience in seeing some of his programs in action. I hear great things about it. But they are at the Avalon School Auditorium Friday, the 24th and 25th with a 7 o'clock show. Sunday matinee, the 26th at 2 o'clock. It's $6 for adults and $4 for students and seniors.
Status of the flooded cars?
Status of the flooding cars, we are taking claim forms. We took them for the State Department. We had 16 of them go out last week with a letter saying this is the Avalon community, this is what's happened. And I haven't heard response. I did ask for, once they receive them, some type of response back. We are taking claim forms for the city of Long Beach through this week, the end of this week. We've got a handful of those back. We heard some interesting news, I heard some interesting news today from one of the community members that's affected. I'd like to touch base with Scott to see what we can do about it. But she had a conversation with a gentleman that worked for the city of Long Beach and said, we've got some fault here, we had a pump that was out. And so I think they know they've, they've got possible some ownership there and hopefully that's something that we can use to our advantage. So we're taking those claims forms, they're here at City Hall through the end of the week. If people need a few extra days, we certainly can extend that out, but the plan was to get those in the mail next week.
Assemblyman Pat O'Donnell would also like to be aware that those went out. So, and when we sent them out, because he's very concerned, because whether it be a Caltrans or City of Long Beach, because I guess City of Long Beach does own that, that structure.
Correct.
Or that land that it's on. So I'm hearing that, too, about maybe the liability being on the city of Long Beach.
And I can keep them in the loop on, in terms of what's, what's happening there as well.
And I had, I spent all Saturday with the city attorney of City of Long Beach, who said, yeah, maybe I was wrong when I told you we didn't own it. So
I would hope
But he asked him other discussions, too, so.
I would hope when the city, if, just out of courtesy, if there's a few that come in a little straggle a little later.
Well, you, you have a year. Under the law, you have a year.
So I don't want people to be discouraged.
You know, in the first round of them, I received one just today and I'm more than happy to put it in the mail and just add it to the, the group that went out.
Are you, I hate to ask him, are you keeping a list of who's was sent in or something?
I've taken copies of everything that's, that's gone out, so we've got copies of everything as well.
Thank you very much, Dan, that's awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Anything else? No. We're going to the consent calendar. Isn't this exciting?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a few items. Item number one, her, is approval of the actions minutes from the March 7, 2017 regular city council meeting. Item number two is expenditure submitted for approval. The recommendation is to approve a total disbursement from February 24, 2017 to March 10, 2017 totaling $1,873,111.34. Item number three is to, is approval for additional expenditure on the outdoor fitness equipment at Avalon Canyon Fit Trail Project at Kids Park. The recommended action is to approve additional expenditure of $12,266.3 for the outdoor fitness equipment provided by Greenfield's Outdoor Fitness for the Avalon Canyon Fit Trail Project at Kids Park. And these funds, of course, are coming from grant funds that we received. There's no impact on the general fund. Item number four is part of our cleanup effort and of the maintenance facility disposing and declaring excess old equipment as surplus. The recommended action is to adopt a resolution declaring specified equipment to be surplus and authorizing the same. And to a question that was posed to me about that, public agencies have, have first right, if they will, on property, should there be any, as there may be for some of that equipment. Item number five is to authorize reconditioning of wastewater treatment plant low bluff flow pump. The recommended action is to authorize the expenditure for reconditioning of this, of the pump at the city of Avalon's wastewater treatment facility at a cost not to exceed $12,000 from the Sewer Emergency Maintenance Fund, account number 107-25-5720. And if I recall, and Ms. Ratty can correct me, that this is a sole source purchase that has been researched to ensure that it is a sole source purchase because the parts are only made by the company that manufactured the, the item. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'd like to pull the warrant and
Pull the what? Item number
Pull item number two and item number five.
I'd like to ask a question about number three. Is that for equipment that we already have that we're just paying for? Okay, cool, thanks.
I'd like to just ask a question on four, too, item number four.
Do you want to just ask it or pull it?
I think I'll just ask it. I see that some of the stuff that, that we're getting ready to go on, but I see here with the cameras up there, is that for our security cameras up at the warehouse?
We have, we have new security camera going in.
So we're not just taking these down and not having
We will have security, we have better security than we've ever had.
Have a better, better
Yes, sir.
Before we take them down.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was my question.
I had a quick one on number four, too. The, these items that are going to be surplus, are they going to be removed from the island?
We are, our goal is to remove them one way or the other from the island, to remove them. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we want them gone.
How far in the channel?
Well, I mean, I realize that there might be some use in some of these things, but I, I just, you know, want to, well, obviously, cameras is not that big of a deal, but there are vehicles and large equipment pieces and whatnot. And I hate to see them on the side of the road sometimes.
No, we, we, we do not want to see that and we thank you for that.
Well, let me ask you a question, too. Do we put those three, those three trams on that list? Is that on here?
They have already been declared surplus. They have also already, there was, I'd have to get an update as to the potential from Oregon to purchase those, but since I see them here, apparently that purchase is not taking place. So I, we, I'll have to get an update on that. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Move staff on one, three and four.
Is there a second?
A second.
Great. Okay, move to second, call for the vote.
All ayes.
Thank you. The warrant? So I have a quest, I have a couple of questions, but Oh, there you go, Bob. So maybe it's just that Catalina Island Medical Center employee screenings, $53,474. Is that just labeled something incorrectly?
Yes, that was labeled incorrectly.
Yeah, is, should it be our subsidy?
What happens is we, that, the main portion of that is the tax pass through, the sales tax pass through.
Yeah, okay.
What happens is when we generate that report, it pulls the data from the invoices and sometimes it'll pull it from maybe a $50 invoice.
Okay.
And that was the description for that.
Okay.
We need to
Yeah, that just look
Look for that a little bit more carefully next time.
just for clarification, the parking concepts, $101,000, that's for what period of time?
That's transportation concepts, our, our bus drivers.
And how long a time is that? Time period is that? I mean, is that a month, six months, two, three months?
What was
It's $101,000, it says 217 on it, but, but I don't know, I don't know how much we're giving them, I forget, so
I don't know the exact amount, but I'm recalling it's, it's around half that, so that's probably two months worth of
Okay.
And we will verify that for you.
I had just forgotten what, how much we were giving them.
I think it's $600,000, somewhere close to that.
Okay, and then, um maybe I don't want to, no, the, the reimburse it to Yoshi, the, the rent reconciliation of 2681?
Yes, to the hard one.
216 rent reconciliation for Yoshi for 2618. Who would, who would have been entered into that rec, is that, was it, is that a communication that you have with her to reconcile the rent?
At the end of the year, we reconcile the rent based on
The ground.
On, uh, the percentage rent versus the gross receipts.
That's right, okay, that's right. I think that's the first Okay. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There you go, Annie. No, I'm glad you noticed those things, because I'm glad somebody's looking at that really closely, and close enough to notice some, a typo.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Move staff on two.
Staff on two, is there
Second.
Okay, moved to second, call for the vote.
All eyes.
Thank you. And item number five, I have a question. On the, on the ES purchase, and it seems, because we have a contract with them, on every, so they, they're sending something to be repaired, and then they put a 15% markup on it. Well, if we're in contract with them, why, is it in their contract that they can put a 15% markup on something?
It is, anything over $5,000. And it used to be on anything over $1,000, and last spring, I believe, we brought their contract back before you, and we modified it, and so it is saving us money now. I know.
Saving us money from what it was before.
Mm-hmm.
And what's, because, I mean, if, if you're, I guess it slipped through my fingers, but, um, if you're doing your job, if you're working every day, and one of the things you have to do is send a part back to Canada, wouldn't that just be in a day's work?
I, I think they consider it an administrative fee, is generally when you have a markup. You could say that's what it is, yes. But they're doing it, Annie, it's not the city of Avalon employees, so now they have to
Yeah, but, I mean, we also pay them for the contract, which
Yes, we do.
But, okay.
There's a monthly operation cost, and this is above and beyond.
Yeah, okay.
I know. And, and I guess my request on item number five would be, um, to Mr. Greenlaw, this would probably end up in your lap, but to get a plan together for, you know, I know we're working on an overall infrastructure plan for, for the city, um, for our, but, our roads and streets and all of that, but we've had a couple of emergency items that have come before us because of the wastewater treatment plan as well. So I'd love to see this all come through as budget, um, and not emergency items, to have just a good overall view of what's going on at the wastewater treatment plant. They do provide us with quite a list every year for their projects that they want to get done in that fiscal year, and I know that Bob, I haven't been able to meet with Bob, and he's been rounding all his other projects, but we will be going through it, and he'll be meeting with Van, I believe you, you've met him already from ES, he, and Mr. Greenlaw's already gone out there. But, you know, some emergencies happen, Cindy, also, but we try our best, and that's why there's so much money in our emergency fund, too.
That's why it's called emergency.
So we don't go Well, yeah, but everything's an emergency, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, I understand. Mainly the saltwater stuff, yes.